Thank you. Okay, this is the Wellfleet Zoning Board of Appeals regular meeting for Thursday, July 14th. And our first case is 2213 Foster, the 206A Kendrick Avenue, Unit H, map 20 parcel 28. Application for special permit to close in the basement walls currently above grade to use as a storage area. The current structure is a crawl space and no basement due to issues with the original structure. The board for this will be Manny Mick, Will Trevor and myself and is Ms. Foster here to present.
This may be the one that requested the continuation.
Do we have paperwork to that effect?
It was a phone telephone request.
The telephone request? Okay, and no one has appeared to make that request. All right, I'll give people a minute or two.
You want to go to the next hearing and then come back to that?
Yeah, that's what I'll do. I'll open the next hearing and we'll come back and see if anybody wants that one. Good, good point. All right, 2214 McQuilliken and Augusta 5E Street Lieutenant Island map 41 map parcel 160. Application for special permit under Wellfleet zoning by law 6.1.5.4 to alter the roof shape from a shed roof to a gable roof, increasing the volume of that portion of the structure presently non-conforming. And the board for this will be Mick, Trevor, Manny, Will and Andy. So I am looking for...
Hi, yes, I'm Wendy Cody.
Okay.
I'm an architect and I'm working with Lucy McQuilliken and Charles Augusta. They are the homeowners at 5E Street on Lieutenant Island. And as you mentioned, we are seeking permission to alter the roof shape of the house and change it from a shed roof to a gable roof, which increases the volume at two non-preexisting non-conforming areas of the house. Am I able to share the screen and walk through the drawings so I can explain a little more about the project?
You are, you are, but we did make a site visit to the site and we also do have the drawings, so you may not need to do that. But Chris, you could give her permission to share her screen if she'd like to do that.
And Sharon, also, there might be some of butters that might want to see it.
That's true, very good point. Okay, Chris, can you give her permission to share screen? Wendy, it's Wendy Cody.
Wendy, right, yep.
Wait one second here.
I'm sorry.
I have a lot of people here.
Yeah, right.
Bear with me.
Sure.
Wendy.
She may just be able to, but...
That's what I'm wondering, yeah.
Yeah, why don't you just try it?
Okay, so let me just...
Yeah.
Sorry, I'm trying to... Oh, can you see my screen or no?
We cannot yet, no.
All right, let me just back up here. Oh, gosh. Sorry. All right, share screen. Sorry, it's just taking me a minute here.
Zoom always does.
You don't, okay, wait, let's...
Sharon, if I may interject again, maybe you could ask any butters if they're out there if they would like it to see it, because we've all seen it.
Can you see my screen now or no?
No, we still can't. So if there is any butter in this group who would like to see this drawing, could you please raise your hand so we know whether we need to be bothered with doing this or not?
No hands.
No hands.
All right.
Okay, I think you're okay then, because we all have the drawings, so you can go ahead.
All right, I'll do my best to just reference the drawings. All right, so let me just start, oh, wait.
Ah.
All right, now can you see it? Okay.
Yes.
Perfect. All right, so I'm going to use this and then point to things. It'll be easier for me to walk you through.
Sure.
So I'm going to start with the site plan, this first site plan here. This basically shows the existing house footprint and the two non-conforming areas over here where it's a 25-foot setback and over here where it's 30-foot setback. And what we're proposing to do, the second site plan shows you that we're looking to build an addition along the backside of the house here. And it changes the house width, basically it's roughly like 18 feet now. We're looking to bump out another 12 feet or so, which changes the whole house width to 30 feet. So even though the proposed addition is conforming to the setbacks, it does have us revisiting the roof and thinking more about the roof shape. And in doing that, you know, there are options, of course, but one option is to just put one big roof over the whole volume. But instead, we chose to look at it differently in that we looked at configuring smaller roofs, a series of smaller roofs to kind of bring down the scale, make it a little more intimate. And also, this allows us to create higher ceiling in some of the areas, I'll just refer to this floor plan here. So it allows us to create a higher ceiling over here in this family sitting space, across the dining room, and then over at the bedrooms. And the advantage of the higher ceiling is it allows us to bring in some windows that are up high. So we're looking at transom windows above these windows here, transom windows above the doors, glass is up high in the gable. And more importantly, this roof shape and this roof pitch allows us to incorporate some dormers. And the dormers are not creating a second story or anything like that. They're simply there to introduce light and ventilation that's up high. So if we look here quickly at this section, you can see what we're after. As far as the windows that are up high, these are the dormers with the windows that are up in the clear stories. And then if we drop ceiling fans, it allows us to do passive cooling. And more importantly, it allows us to bring natural light that's deep into the space. So on this floor plan, you know, the house is 30 feet across, but with, when we integrate the dormers here and here, it allows us to bring some natural light deep into the space. Also, the house is oriented, you can see here with the north arrow, this whole side faces north, this side faces northeast, so it's pretty dark in this house. So doing that allows us to, as I said, bring in more natural light and ventilation. And if there's any confusion on this sheet, I just want to mention, this model predates the drawings. So this was our initial concept of bringing in light up high. And then we, you know, expanded the idea and this drawing shows the more current design, which is to bring in more windows. Here, we just had one window. It allows us to bring in more, you know, windows for light ventilation. It's more environmentally friendly. And then I included these dimension strings here at each side of the house, just so you can correlate where the gable occurs in relationship to the setbacks at these two locations. And then lastly, just to wrap it up here, on this cross-section, you can see the existing house shed roof peak is here and the new one's here. So we're seeking approval to just, you know, raise the roof height just under 7 feet here. This also accommodates the new framing that would be required. You know, obviously, this was, you know, this doesn't meet current codes as far as framing depth and sizes. So, you know, we had to factor all that in also. So any questions or...
All right. Okay, you can...
Oh, switch off?
You can, you can stop sharing.
Okay.
You can come back. Thank you. Okay, all right. Do I have any questions from the audience for this project? Not seeing any. Chris, did we have any letters on this project?
No.
Okay. All right, I'm going to go to the board then. Andy?
I'm just a little confused about the calculation of the building height. Could you explain that? New building, that is, wherever you are.
She's over here, Ms. Scott is over here.
So, so on sheet A4?
Yeah.
I did my best to break down the top of the roof peak at the existing versus the new. It shows an elevation increase of 6 feet 10 and 1/2 inches.
Right, but I guess what I'm asking you is, where is the, where is the base? Where are you measuring it from?
Oh, okay, so I'm measuring it from, so the maximum building height, I believe, originates from the average mean grade.
Right.
Yeah, so the 29.5 was generated from the civil engineer that provided us with the plot plan.
And one other question, and that is, have you been before the cons comm yet?
Yes, we've already went through all that and received approval.
Okay.
Yep.
I don't have any other questions.
Okay, Will?
Yeah, I'm just confused. When I first read your application, it sounded like you were putting a new roof on the existing wall. And because that's what you sort of indicate in paragraph four, and then you talk about an addition. I mean, is the footprint exactly the same? Are you tearing down the building and just rebuilding it? And I got to tell you?
So, so the, on the, on the first, so the first two site plan drawings of your packet, so the first site plan shows the existing house footprint is there now. And then the second site plan shows the addition. Actually, it might be easier if I refer, actually, you know what, if you could turn to page A-2, I did my best to overlay the existing footprint that's shown with the dashed line on top of the new proposed floor plan. So we are, we are basically following the footprint of the existing house, adhering to it exactly where it exceeds the setback, and then bumping out on the other side.
I got you.
Yep.
I got you.
Yep. In fact, I mean, to be honest, we're actually decreasing the non-conforming areas with the new footprint. If you look to the far left and then to the far right, you can see our new footprint doesn't even extend out as far as we are probably grandfathered to do. So the new footprint's actually a little less.
Nope, I've got you now, thank you.
Okay, Mick?
No questions.
Manny?
No questions.
Rhita?
No, I don't have any questions. I mean, I agree with Will, the application was a little, a little confusing. You know, it says right on the last line of the application, there is no increase in square footage.
So I'm sorry, do you know what? I apologize. I actually read that also just recently before this hearing, and I realized I should have elaborated. When I said no increase in square footage, I should have also said in the non-conforming area. Yeah, I should have completed the sentence and provided a little more info. I'm sorry, that confused me too, actually. I was like, I should have been more specific and said to the non-conforming areas, we are not increasing square footage, yeah.
Okay, thanks. Al?
No questions.
Dan?
Yeah, I don't have any questions, but I think there's an error that, if I'm correct, we should make note of. I think there's an error on the existing site plan in the zoning table. It says proposed building coverage.
Yes, right.
I think that's supposed to say existing building coverage. Where it says house area over lot area, it says 1,587 square feet over the 20,006 square foot for the lot. I think that should be titled existing building coverage. Not on the, not on the proposed site plan, on the existing site plan.
Okay, on the existing site plan?
Yeah, take a look at the zoning table.
Yes, zoning table, okay.
And says, you see, it says zoning classification, front yard setback side, maximum building height. And then the last square, it says proposed building coverage. I think that's supposed to be existing building coverage.
Yes, right, yes. That, that, that's, I think you're right about that, yep.
Right, because you, otherwise your proposed is both 7.9 and 11.5, which doesn't make any sense.
Got it, got it.
Should the minutes make note of that, Sharon?
Yeah, Chris, make sure, yeah, got it, good, okay. All right, any other questions? And mine was, it's code, you, so what it's going to end up with is a volumetric increase on the setback. Do we know what the volumetric increase actually is on that setback?
I did not tabulate that volume, but I could certainly provide that for you.
Well, we can just say volumetric increase.
Sharon, may I ask one more question?
Sure.
Just to clarify what Will asked, this is actually a tear down, though, isn't it? You're going to take down the whole, the existing building?
Right, it started as a renovation and then there's just not enough structural integrity with what's there now. I mean, but it's, the walls are all two by four on the exterior. We started by, it started as a renovation, actually. And then we realized, there's just, there's not enough integrity with the structure right now. It doesn't make sense to, to try to save it. It makes sense to just do new construction, thicker walls, better insulation. And also, it doesn't meet current code. It's all, all the framing's pretty undersized, so, yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to be clear, that's all, thank you.
Why was that not stated, rather than just replacing the roof line?
Yeah, exactly.
Oh, I'm sorry.
In other words, your, your whole appeal is based on, you know, changing the roof line of this building, not reconstructing a building. Why weren't you just up front and saying, we're going to tear it down?
Oh, no, no. So I, so I met with the building inspector, and I wasn't under the impression that we needed permission to tear it down. As long as we adhere to the existing footprint, he alerted me, he alerted me that we just needed zoning approval because of the volumetric increase with the roof. That was, that was the only thing he told me that I need to seek permission for.
Okay.
He, I didn't think, I wasn't under the impression that tearing it down triggered any sort of special zoning approval, as long as...
No, I was just wondering, you know, why the wording was, was that. Yeah, thank you for educating me on that, yeah.
And, and you're right about that, you know, a tear down and build up on the exact, on the exact footprint with no volumetric increase would not require special permit.
Okay, that was with the building inspector. That's how he presented it to me also.
Yeah, okay, you're right. Any other questions, guys?
I'll make a motion to go to findings.
Okay, Mick makes a motion. I need a second.
Okay.
Okay, all in favor, let's see, Andy?
Hi.
Nick?
Hi.
Trevor?
Hi.
Manny?
Hi.
Well, okay, this is what I have, thank you, Will. 2414 Lucy T. McQuilliken and Charles C. Augusta 5E Street Lieutenant Island map 41 parcel 160, request for a special permit to permit the construction of gable roof in place of the existing shed roof and to add second, it's not second floor, add, add living space. Because you're still staying with the first floor. You're staying with one floor, yeah.
Yes, yes.
Add living space.
It's just one floor.
Yeah. The applicants own a single-family house on a pre-existing non-conforming lot that does not comply with current setback law, bylaw provisions. The applicants propose to replace the existing structure with a new one-story structure on the existing footprint, hereinafter referred to as the alteration. The construction of the alteration would not further increase the existing non-conformity of the setbacks, non-conformities, but would result in a volumetric increase of the existing structure. The applicable provisions for this application under Towne &amp; Wellfleet zoning bylaws are 5.4.2, rear setback 30 degrees, 30 feet, and side setback of 25 feet in the R1 district. Section 1.5, section 6.1.5.1B and section 8.4.2. There are no appearances or correspondence in support or in opposition to the application. The application has received conservation commission approval. The section 6.1.5.1B, the board finds that the alteration is not substantially detrimental, more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming structure. Section 8.4.2.1A, the board finds that the addition is suitable in that it is compatible with nearby land uses, which would not be damaged by the addition. B, the board finds that the roads, drainage and other public utilities would not be affected by the additions. And C, the board finds that the addition will not contribute to environmental damage. Section 8.4.2.2 is not applicable. Section 8.4.2.3, the board finds that the building in-site design will not adversely affect scenic views from public ways or neighboring properties. That's what I have. Questions, corrections?
Is it really on the existing footprint? I'm not sure.
I believe it is on the existing footprint.
Doesn't look like that to me, but hard to tell. You can ask the architect.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I don't understand.
Is it on the existing footprint?
We are matching the existing footprint where it's non-conforming. Is that the question?
Yeah, okay. On the existing footprint.
Right, because, okay, they're adding, yeah, you're building a new house.
You're building a new house.
It's not on the existing footprint.
Right.
Part of it is, but part of it isn't.
All right, this new one-story structure, I'm just going to say with a new one-story structure, hereinafter referred to as the addition, the construction of the alteration would not further exist, increase the existing non-conformity of the setback, non-conformities. Is that better?
That's, sounds good to me.
Okay, good. All right. Anything else? If not, I need a...
I will make a motion to move.
Except the findings, I need a second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, Andy?
Hi.
Nick?
Hi.
Trevor?
Hi.
Manny?
Hi.
Will?
Hi.
And having heard that, I need a motion to grant the special permit.
To grant the special permit.
Okay, I need a second.
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor, Andy?
Hi.
Mick?
Hi.
Trevor?
Hi.
Manny?
Hi.
And Will?
Hi.
Thank you, Ms. Scott.
Thank you.
You be in touch with Chris Bates over the next steps.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a good week.
You too.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, 2515 Savage 30 Noble Way map 23 parcel 180, 134. Application for a special permit under Wellfleet zoning by law 6.1.5.1B and 8.4.2 to remove existing screen porch and replace with a four-season room with a 3 foot 6 inch covered landing and secondary entrance and an attached deck. A portion of the improvement will be 21.9 feet from the easterly property line. And for this, Will, Andy and Trevor are recusing themselves. My, the board will be Manny, Mick, what am I doing here? I'm in the wrong one. Jan, Rhita, Manny, Mick and myself. Okay, wherever the savages are, they may begin. There you are, yes.
Thank you very much. Judy and Paul Savage, and thank you for considering our application. Since retiring to Wellfleet just over a year ago, we have refined the planned renovation of our home to accommodate year-round living and aging in place. Our existing screen porch, which was built in the 1980s, considered legally non-conforming since it sits 24 feet from the property line. We plan to replace this poorly constructed porch with a mudroom and laundry, which will be moved forward of the existing porch. A new deck and a small deck to the rear and screen porch will be situated behind the house in the mudroom. The proposed mudroom will have a setback of 21.9 feet from the side property line, slightly increasing our non-conformance with the zoning by law. At its nearest point, the proposed addition will be over 63 feet from our neighbor's home. And we believe that the minor increase in non-conforming use will have no detrimental impact upon our neighbors, the larger neighborhood or the larger environment. We'd be happy to answer any questions about details as appropriate.
Thank you very much. Do I have any, I know I have one letter that was incorporated in our packet from the, and of course, I can't find it now, but at any rate, from the, from the sews next door, oh, there it is. "To whom it may concern, my neighbors Judy and Paul Savage have consulted with me about the planned renovations to their home at 30 Noble Way. I'm aware that the house was non-conforming in relation to our lot line in, at 10 Noble Way. The current conforming use does not adversely affect our property, the existing non-conforming structure, nor the proposed addition are not and will not be detrimental to our property. Further, the planned renovation will not only improve their property, it will also, I believe, add value to my property and the neighborhood." And that is from Philip Sue, who is, I believe, your nearest to butter. Anybody else from the audience who wants to speak to this? I don't see anybody. Okay, I will go to the board. Nick?
Hi, none of a problem. The only issue I have is I did have to wear my Mr. Magoo glasses to decipher the numbers for the height and everything. It's really extremely difficult for me to read this. I have a hard enough time as it is, but I would like in the future to see bigger plans so I can actually see what's going on.
Okay, Manny?
I had the same comment.
We're all getting old. Anything else, Manny?
No.
Okay, Rhita?
No, I have no, no questions.
And Jan?
I'm just looking for two pieces of missing information, which may be there in the tiny type that I can't see. I was looking for an approximate square footage of the, the existing screen porch. I couldn't find that. And then I was also looking for an approximate square footage of the existing dwelling. So the existing screen porch is approximately the same square footage as the new proposed mudroom will be. It will just be situated about 10 feet forward to accommodate an open-air deck behind it, which will be the place where we can grill and catch some sun. And the dimensions are 12 by 22, so approximate square footage is 250, somewhere.
271. I'm going to show off my good eyes here, because the dimensions on the, the tiny dimensions on the plan, actually, the screen and porch made it 238 square feet, and the mudroom is 271.
So it's 238?
It's 238, based on the, that it's, you know, I did the math. I could see the tiny little numbers that tell you what it, what it is by what it is, and I just did the math.
And do we want to know the approximate square footage of the existing dwelling?
The, the building inspector's card says 2,246, is that? The, the building inspector's, um, card says two thousand, two hundred and forty-six. Is that?
Is that?
Does anybody know if that's right? If that, is that what the, what?
What is the site plan?
It's what's on the, the inspector's, the assessor's card.
Yeah, it's, uh.
I don't know if that includes things that we shouldn't. Mm-hmm.
Is that suitable for our use?
Manny, Manny, do you know anything about what those assessor's cards say and if they're right?
They could be anything.
Okay.
I'm not sure if the screen and porch is in that figure.
Ah-ha, I see. Yep.
Should've been on the plan somewhere.
Mm-hmm. What, yeah, what the square footage of the house is. That I could not find on the plan. Mm-hmm.
Yeah, we can certainly get that for you.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the, the surveyor plan, um, which was included is page ten of our application. That was our lot coverage.
Yeah, the lot coverage is, is on there.
Six percent to nine point, to five point nine six percent. But it does not explicitly state the square footage of the proposed or the existing dwelling on there.
Right. I'm not sure we actually need it since we have the lot coverage, but.
No problem.
Um, Al?
All right. No questions.
Okay, I'm trying to see if there's anybody with all these people recused. Okay, Deanna, do you have any other questions?
No.
Nope. Okay, and I don't have any. I just kind of made up numbers in here. Um, so. All right.
I guess we can make a motion to go with the findings.
We can indeed, yes.
So I'm gonna second that.
What? And you're seconding it, Manny? Thank you. Okay, thank you, so Jan, I have these findings, because I may have to take my glasses off for that. Um, twenty-two fifteen Savage, thirty Noble Way, map twenty-three parcel one thirty-four. Application for a special permit under Wellfleet zoning bylaws, six point one point five point one B and eight point four point two to remove existing screen porch and replace it with a four-season room with a three foot-six-inch covered landing and secondary entrance and an attached deck. A portion of the improvement will be twenty-one point nine feet from the easterly property line. One, this is an application for a special permit under Wellfleet zoning bylaws, um, to remove illegally conforming, forming two hundred and thirty-eight square foot attached screen and porch and replace it with a twenty, twelve foot by twenty-two foot-six-inch four-season room with a three foot-six-inch covered landing and secondary entrance and a twelve foot, ten, twelve by ten, twelve foot by ten foot attached deck. Thereby, hereby referred to as the addition that will extend toward the front of the dwelling and increase the intrusion into the side, side setback. The dwelling is a two-story, single-family residential structure located on a conforming thirty thousand, one hundred and forty square foot lot in the res- residential R-one zoning district where single-family residential use is allowed by right. A ten-foot by twelve-foot shed is also located on the lot. The lot was, the dwelling was constructed in nineteen eighty-one according to the assessor's office. And the non-conforming attached screened porch has been in existence at least twenty-five years as per historical evidence provided in the applicant's Exhibit Eight A screenshot of the sale history showing the enclosed porch in nineteen ninety-seven and Exhibit Eight B email from alternate building inspector Victor Staley. Having been in, in existence for at least ten years, the structure is entitled to treatment as a legally non-conforming structure as provided for in Massachusetts General Law, C forty A, section seven and section eight point two point two of the Wellfleet zoning bylaw. The existing non-conformity regarding the structure is intrusion into the side yard setback, twenty-four feet where twenty-five feet is required. The applicable pres- provisions for this application under Wellfleet zoning bylaw are sections five point four point two, minimum yard requirements, five point one point, six point one point five one B, alteration of a non-conforming single-family residential structure that increases the non-conforming nature of the structure, eight point two point two, non-conforming structures ten years or older, and eight point four point two special permits. The zoning board of appeals hereby referred to as the board has received and reviewed plans and drawings pertaining to the project, all of which are in the file. The board has made a site objection, site inspection of the subject lot. At the furthest point of the proposed addition, the side yard setback will be twenty-nine, twenty-one point nine feet from the easterly lot line. The applicant consulted with the abutting property owners at ten Noble Way and Philip Sue wrote a letter in support of the project. Lot coverage will increase from three point seven percent to five point nine percent where fifteen percent is allowed. There will be no change or increase in use. There, um, there were no additional, there were no additional appearances in support or in, uh, opposition to the application. Um, Wellfleet zoning bylaws, six point one point five point one B, the board finds that the addition will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming structure. And Wellfleet zoning bylaw, eight point four point two, the board finds that the application applicant has demonstrated that the benefits of the addition will outweigh any adverse effects on the town and the vicinity, that the addition is suitable in that it is compatible with nearby land uses which would not be damaged by the construction of the addition, that the addition will not contribute to environmental damage, that the roads, drainage, and other public services are adequate for the addition, that the addition will not affect diversity of services or housing opportunities or have seasonal consequences, and that there will be no adverse effect on scenic views, existing parking areas, or traditional public access to or along the shore. That's what I got.
Drink of water, Sharon.
Yes, I'll have a drink of water. I need a motion to accept the findings.
To, uh, move the findings, to accept the findings.
I'll second it.
And Jan will second it. Um, all in favor of accepting the findings? Jan?
I.
Rita?
Hi.
Manny?
Hi.
Mick?
I.
And myself, hi. And then I need a motion to grant the special permit.
I will make a motion to grant the special permit.
I need a second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Jan?
I.
Rita?
Hi.
Manny?
Hi.
Mick?
Hi.
And myself, hi. I always say myself and then forget to vote. Um, okay, thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Savage. Um, you will, you can court, work with Chris on what happens next.
Thank you, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Assistance.
Okay, now, we need to cycle back and see if anyone has come in and for the Foster application. Do we have anyone here representing twenty-two thirteen Foster Kendrick Road? It would appear not. Okay.
Sharon, it would be my recommendation that we continue this to our August meeting.
Yeah, okay, August, um, our next regular meeting is, that does not, is not forty B would be August, um, eleventh. Do you want to do it to that?
We have two other hearings, uh, scheduled for that night, but we don't have the forty B that night.
No, that's true. We don't. So why don't we do that? I need a motion to continue this to August eleventh? So I need that from the people on the board, who is that, the board in this one is Manny, Mick, Will, Trevor, and me.
I'll move that motion.
Uh, Mick moves, I need a second.
Second.
Okay, Manny? All in favor, Manny?
Hi.
Mick?
Hi.
Will?
Hi.
Trevor?
Hi.
And myself, hi. Okay, all right, all right, we are on to twenty-two sixteen Fellows Preservation of Affordable Housing, ninety-five Lawrence Road, map thirteen parcel two, application for comprehensive permit under Massachusetts General Law forty B S twenty slash twenty-three, development of forty-six affordable units consisting of lower built, lower village building consisting of one, twenty-two, one and two-bedroom flats, and an upper village with twenty-four, one, two, and three-bedroom townhomes. Now, the board for this one will be Will, Mick, Manny, Sharon, and Trevor. And I want to say a couple of things before we start. This project, um, because of its size, is going to be presented in stages. And tonight's presentation is the intro. A week from today, on July twenty-first, we will, we will look at architecture and landscape. Um, on August fourth, we will look at circulation, public realm, and traffic. On August twenty-fifth, we will look at septic and wastewater. Um, on September eighth, we will have a wrap-up meeting, issue the final forty B decision. And if we need it, we will have a second meeting on September twenty-second in case we haven't finished everything that we need to do by then. Um, so, after tonight's applicant's presentation, um, we will open it up to questions from the audience and the board, but I'd like everyone to ask questions only about the things that the applicant has presented tonight. Um, the specific questions about a particular topic um, should be held for the meeting where we will address that topic, and this meeting schedule has been posted in many places, so you can keep track. It, doing this saves time, and it's fairer to the applicant who may not have the relevant experts here tonight to answer questions on traffic or septic, and I want to make sure that the applicant has the chance to, to have his case, the case presented. I also know that we have many letters of support, and we are gathering those. Um, and I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna hold those and incorporate them all into the record on our September eighth meeting. So if tonight, somebody just wants to talk about support, I would ask that you hold that um, until the September eighth meeting when we're actually going to discuss and decide on the special permit. Uh, the other thing before we get started is that tonight's meeting is on Zoom. Next week's meeting, we don't know. If the legislature can get their act together, we would prefer to stay on Zoom, not only for health reasons, but also because we find that it's easier to make sure that everybody's on a le- level playing field. And since we've not dealt with a hybrid meeting before and the possible um, equipment glitches that that may give us, I feel it's safer if we can stay on Zoom. But we have the room at the now Adult Community Center. Um, and if we are not allowed to stay on Zoom, we will be hybrid on July twenty-first, and I would just ask you to watch the town website and stay tuned. Anything else?
Madam Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
Before we get started, I just want to disclose that I am the zoning board's appointed representative on the local housing partnership.
Right. I do not think that's a problem since we put you there.
Just wanted to disclose it.
I'm glad you did, yes. And, and Rita will be recusing herself because her husband is on the local housing partnership, so just slightly different than Jan who represents us there.
Madam Chair, I'm not on this board, but I wanted to, uh, disclose that, uh, for a, uh, significant period of time while I was on the planning board, I was the planning board's representative to the Lawrence Road project.
Thank you. Thank you for that, for that. All right. Anything else before we start? All right, then. You are. You are.
All right. Madam Chair, thank you, uh, very much. I'm, uh, Jay Coburn. I'm the Chief Executive Officer of the Eastham Based Community Development Partnership. And I've lived and worked on the Outer Cape for the past twenty-five years and witness uh, the affordability of housing in our towns go from a challenge to a crisis. And I'm pleased to have the opportunity to present, uh, to the board uh, and kick off this present, presentation of our request for a comprehensive permit to build forty-six units of affordable housing in the Town of Wellfleet. And I believe we've got some, uh, slides, uh, if we could, uh, show to, uh, kind of guide our presentation.
Vita is asking me that, but yes, you can show your slides. Thank you.
And, uh, give me one second because that made my notes disappear. So I know that all of you are aware of the housing crisis that is confronting Wellfleet and the entire region. For over thirty years, the Community Development Partnership has worked to lead the Lower Cape region in building a stronger and more diverse year-round community of people who can afford to live, work, and thrive here through supporting small businesses and advocating for, uh, for, as well as providing affordable housing. We've had the pleasure of working closely with the Town of Wellfleet, whose residents, I had, think have boldly made the decision several years ago to designate the site at ninety-four Lawrence Road as a site for affordable housing, housing. And so I'm pleased to kick off this presentation, which will last about twenty minutes, and after which, of course, we would love to, uh, address your questions and hear your comments. So first, I want to talk a bit about our commitment that has guided this project. Get to the next slide. Vita, are you able to advance that? There we go.
Yeah.
Our team has crafted a bold proposal, and that proposal is to build high-quality affordable housing to a range of incomes and household sizes, to develop an environmentally sustainable property, nearly net zero in energy consumption, and to create a community with a resilient and elegant design that draws on local building condition, uh, traditions. This new neighborhood is a once-in-a-generation opportunity to build a considerable number of affordable homes in Wellfleet. We're proposing a community that provides housing for a diverse range of Wellfleet residents, from seniors and families living on very modest incomes to working families and empty nesters struggling to downsize into local and affordable housing. Our project features a mix of unit sizes, a range of affordability, and a building design that will attract financial partners because it can be delivered on budget and will remain financially healthy over the long term. And our project will be built to the highest level of, of environmental sustainability, healthy, all-electric, energy-efficient homes. And we preserve the existing landscape while minimizing environment, environmental impacts to the surrounding neighbors. Likes to tell you a bit about our team that's involved, uh, in this project. The next slide, Vita. Since our inception in nineteen ninety-two, the Community Development Partnership has been active in Wellfleet, providing affordable housing and nurturing small businesses. We have a deep understanding of the town through our work making loans to shellfishing and other businesses, providing housing rehabilitation services for low-income Wellfleet residents, and housing twelve families for almost twenty years now at Fred Bellway. To take on a project of this magnitude, we have partnered with a team of experts with deep experience and collaborating with communities across the Commonwealth to create housing that is affordable. Our co-developers are Preservation of Affordable Housing. PoA has been developing best-in-class affordable housing for two decades from their base in Boston in communities across the Commonwealth and across the nation. They have extensive experience in building and managing communities on the Lower Cape. The CDP-PoA partnership combines our strengths, the sophisticated development capability of PoA with the local deeply informed expertise of the CDP. And we believe our team is uniquely well-suited to collaborate with the town and deliver the project that is best for Wellfleet's year-round residents. Andrew Singer and Wellfleet resident Marion Rose of Singer and Singer are supporting us through the permitting process. Wellfleet part-time resident Gail Sullivan and her team at Studio G Architects have played a key role in transforming the Wellfleet community's needs into a beautiful and environmentally sustainable design. And coastal engineering based out of Orleans will assist us with, uh, survey and civil engineering work. And finally, a whole host of other consultants he, listed here, are part of our team to ensure a beautiful, sustainable, and successful project. Next slide. So it's really hard to believe that it was over a year ago that we first started working on this project in anticipation of the town's releasing an RFP for a developer to bill, to build affordable housing at ninety-five Lawrence Road. We worked over the summer of twenty twenty-one to prepare our response to the RFP. And in November, our team was chosen by the Wellfleet Select Board to negotiate agreement, an agreement with the town for the use of the land and to submit a comprehensive permit application to the ZBA for our project. One of the benefits of the forty B process and the public hearings that are required is the opportunity they provide for us to work together to fine-tune our vision and perf- perfect our proposal. Through this process, we can adapt and modify our plans so that we create a project that truly meets the town's bold and inspiring vision for our neighborhood that addresses the affordable housing crisis and leads to a more equitable and diverse year-round community. I want to assure you that our proposal is the beginning of a conversation with Wellfleet's officials and citizens on how to build a new neighborhood that dr- addresses a broad range of community needs. And we have been engaged in this community conversation since January in an effort to bring you the ZBA, a proposal that meets Wellfleet's needs, needs, and has the support of the Butters and the Wellfleet community. In April, we informally submitted a draft of our comprehensive permit application to town staff and regulatory board chairs for input. We are in the final stages of negotiating a ground lease and land disposition agreement with the town. We've conducted onsite meetings with the Butters to the project and had an informational table at the June Annual Town Meeting. And finally, we held a virtual Q and A session with members of the public on June twenty-seventh. Our pledge is to continue to engage with the Wellfleet community, explaining our plans and eagerly listening to any concerns addressed by residents. explaining our plans and eagerly listening to any concerns addressed by residents. And now I would like to turn over the presentation to my friend and colleague, Vita Slavsky, Senior Project Manager for Preservation of Affordable Housing, to provide an overview of our proposed development.
Thanks, Jay. Let me see if I can move my screen there though. Thanks, Jay, for the introduction. I'm here with our colleagues from PoA and CDP and our architects at Studio G. Before I get into kind of a really brief overview of what our design kind of looks like from a high-level perspective, I just wanted to introduce myself and give you all on the board a sense of who I am and why I work in affordable housing. So I myself am an immigrant. I may not sound like it, but I moved here to Massachusetts in 93, when I was just a wee child. But I was old enough at the age of where I was in 93 to understand kind of the difference between what it was like to grow up in the Soviet Union, which was still then Soviet Union, and what it was like to move to a place called Framingham, Massachusetts, where in where I was growing up, it was completely understandable that everybody took the buses, took the trams, took public transportation to get around the city of Dibit, which is where I'm from, just south of Moscow. And then when I came here, as a child, you know, I would walk around with my mom on the sidewalks of Framingham. And I remember very viscerally feeling odd as people in cars would stare at my mom and me just walking down the street because we were living in a neighborhood that we were walking toward our own kind of affordable housing side of the tracks of Framingham. And back then, I remember living myself on food stamps. And I just, you know, at such a young age, I clearly kind of felt the difference of what, why are, why is there such a sense of just inequality in this new land that I'm living in, you know, when I was going into like second, third grade? So because of that kind of feeling and reason, I've always like mattered, I've always thought about the urban environment, the built environment, and what policies are, could be like, should be like for people to live, just to have a place to live in a safe shelter and all of those kinds of things that go into, you know, living in a, in a good community. So that's kind of just the brief overview of me and myself and how I came to work in affordable housing. Now, it's been almost a decade. Jesus, I am older than I look, I promise. Okay, so that's me. And it just so happens, actually, speaking of Framingham, that I started to work at PoA just last year. I came to learn that PoA redeveloped and now owns and manages a property that is in Framingham, where my grandparents lived. So it just, just felt like the right place, like right place to work. So anyway, long story short, here we are with our development proposal for 95 Lawrence Road. So like Jay mentioned, we have a proposal that has kind of an upper and a lower village of sorts. And if people might be familiar with our site, we have a ball field and a water tower, both of which we're not touching, they're not planning to touch, those will still be city property. And kind of on top of, on the site, we're planning to have kind of town home-style units in the upper village, which will have individualized entrances and a lot of outdoor space and amenities. And then in the lower village, more flats, flat-style apartments for primarily one- and two-bedroom apartments. So let me just kind of step through what that looks like from a site plan level. Again, we have a total of 46 apartments. And in these upper village, we have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 individual kind of set of townhomes, along with a community facility that will have a central mailbox, a central laundry room, kind of a little community center of sorts. And then we have surface parking serving all of the homes that are in the upper village. And again, like I mentioned, on the, on the, on the lower village, we have just kind of a, a couple-story building with its own dedicated parking lot. And I don't want to get too far into the weeds of the design because we're going to get more into the architecture and the thought behind our landscape design next week, at our meeting next week. But I just wanted to give everybody kind of a sense of what the layout looks like, what the circulation looks like here on our site. Stepping through, here's again our upper village. These are, again, kind of a couple units together with individual entrances and town home-size apartments. And plenty of place for, you know, kids to play and drive and ride their bikes. And here's what the lower village looks like, again, 22 flats with a little community center on, off the side of the building. And then here's that little community building, amenity area that will be up at the upper village, like I mentioned in the site plan. And again, we'll talk about this more next week, and we'll also have our landscape architect speak to what the landscape and vegetation will look like. But we'll be really leveraging the existing vegetation that's already on the site to really let people enjoy their homes, enjoy the safety of this neighborhood. And in, in the kind of Cape vernacular of the architecture that exists, and elevating it even more so in our proposal. And just touching briefly on our unit mix and composition, we have a mix that really will serve families and households. And will be, again, serving folks who either are on a single income or a double income, as the case may be, a range of incomes for folks on the Cape. We have a number that will be 30% AMI, which are, which will be eight units for folks who sometimes don't even have the ability to have jobs. And so that'll serve folks who are maybe on sort of security or other kinds of income, which can't, which, you know, folks who can't physically go work. And then we'll have a range of 27 apartments, both one-bedroom-sized units and also family-sized two-, three-bedroom apartments, which will serve families who have jobs, who are bringing in salaries, be they, you know, teachers, firefighters, et cetera, folks who are serving the communities, serving the community in Wealthfleet and the Cape, and really need that stable, permanent year-round housing. And then we'll also have a number of folks who'll be able to be eligible for apartments that are between the 60 and 120% area income apartments. Those, those are the ones that we call workforce housing. That'll be for folks who maybe even have two people in the, two individuals in the household who have jobs. And really trying to support those folks on the Cape. And like Sharon mentioned up at the top of the presentation, I want to make sure that we all kind of understand the, the schedule from here on out. What I'm showing here is our schedule on the top of the page where today is our introduction. Next week, we're going to dive more deeply into the weeds of the architecture and the landscape of our design. Before that, we'll be issuing detailed drawings tomorrow to Rebecca Roughly, who will then distribute, I believe, to the rest of you folks here tonight. Kind of set of a more detailed drawings than what we submitted back in June for the purpose of our ZBA submission. We have worked a little bit further on our schematic drawings, you know, really fine-tuning the ideas around logistics around the site. And so we'll be issuing that tomorrow ahead of our meeting next week about our own design. And then on August 4th, we'll have our meeting around circulation and public realm and traffic. And so ahead of that, we'll be issuing a traffic report on July 28th. And then on August 25th, we have our meeting around civil engineering. What I do want to mention here today, and we can dive more deeply into the discussion on August 25th, is the wastewater treatment facility that the town of Wealthfleet has been working on to develop. What the plan will be for that wastewater treatment facility is that the town is the one who is sponsoring that project and driving that project, and he will be responsible for the construction. What will happen is our partnership, PoA and CDP, will be contributing toward that and coordinating our civil engineering efforts with the facility. But really, the town will be the ones responsible for creating and constructing that facility. So just wanted to mention that for you folks. And then like Sharon mentioned, we're going to have some wrap-up meetings in September to cover any bases that we hadn't, to answer more questions that we hadn't gotten to. And we'll have two of those in September, on the 8th and then on the 22nd. And one thing I just wanted to mention here regarding our schedule, and well, actually a couple of things. One is, we're incredibly thankful for Rebecca Roughly for working through this calendar for us. If it wasn't for her, we wouldn't be able to start today and, you know, work through the schedule with you. So thank you, Rebecca, for that. Another thing I wanted to mention is we're, we've created this calendar for a couple of reasons. One is that we're really able to dig deeply into each topic with the ZBA and the public so that we don't have one long meeting forever and ever where, you know, people don't have time to really talk about their questions and concerns. So that's one reason that we've kind of separated each topic the way we have over the next couple of months. And the other reason is, hopefully by the end of those wrap-up meetings in September, we will have had significant, you know, real conversations around all these topics for the project whereby we can get the approvals that we're looking for from the developer's perspective for funding. In October, we have a deadline for a pre-application to the state's Department of Housing and Community Development for their funding. And so by virtue of having this schedule of conversations with you guys, with the ZBA, with the town of Wealthfleet, hopefully with all these discussions wrapping up in September, we'll have an approval from, from the ZBA. And that way, we look ready to be funded to the state. So those are kind of the motivations behind this calendar, if you will. And that's it. That's the show. That's all we wrote.
Okay.
Vita, if I could, I'm sure if I could just add, Vita's point on that timetable, we are certainly, you know, deeply committed to taking the time needed to get this project right. But also, I think we want everybody to understand how if we miss our deadline in the fall, it's likely that we delay for a full year and have to go into the January 2024 application. And I think it's all of our desire to work together to fully vet this project, but also to be able to move as quickly as possible.
No, no, no. No. Okay. Thank you. Okay, I can, you can stop sharing your screen? Okay. All right. Whoops. So I think I will go to the audience again. If there are general questions, if, if your purpose is simply to say that you support this project, I think you can hold that for now. But if there are questions about what has been presented tonight, I'd be happy to hear those right now. And if not, I think I will go to-
Mr. Elkin is holding his hand up.
Mr. Elkin is holding his hand up. Yes, Mr. Elkin is somewhere.
At home, frankly.
Yes. Mr. Elkin, go right ahead.
I have two questions, one of which I don't expect an answer to tonight. The first question is roughly, in what timeframe do you expect to be applying for building permits? That is, how far off is the construction? If you get the approval you're anticipating?
Yeah. All right. Jay Coburn, do you want to answer that question? You're muted, actually, so you can't.
Sorry, I think Vita is actually probably a little bit better.
Okay. Go to that one.
Sure, no problem. So if we're successful with applying and receiving funds with the state between, say, later this winter through next spring, we'll probably be in a position to start construction probably in the fall next year, and we expect about a 12, 14-month construction schedule. So if we start, say, by, you know, November, December next year of 2023, we'll probably be done probably around January 25.
Okay. And the second part of my question, and I don't expect an answer to this, is the state is looking to revise the building codes, particularly the stretch code and the special stretch code. And I wonder if it would be possible for you to look ahead at what is being talked about and compare your plans to those codes? I, I don't expect an answer now, but perhaps sometime in the future.
Sure, I can speak to that a little bit. And then Gail, I see she wants to say something from the boat. Gail, I'm so jealous of where you are. But let me start by saying that PoA, as a developer, so we have a portfolio of over 12,000 units, and we strive to, most recently and going forward, to certify all of our projects as passive house. Passive house is a pretty high standard of energy efficiency where things are as all-electric as possible and, you know, not relying on fossil fuels for energy. And so I think in most areas, if I'm, I might be wrong, I'm not the expert on this, but we, we will at least meet code, if not more. I think stretch code will be right up our alley. And both PoA and Studio G are dedicated to making this as sustainable as possible. And I'm not saying that quote-unquote is sustainable, I'm, I'm saying really sustainable. We have the right, I mean, we have the greatest MDP engineers and consultants to really think about the energy efficiencies of our building. Maybe Gil can fill in some gaps about other things about stretch code.
Sure.
Thanks, Vita. The only thing I'd add to it is, and thanks, Mr. Elkin, for asking this question. We are very mindful, and so we have a code consultant that we work with, and he keeps abreast of what the proposed changes are. So we're always looking for what's being proposed as changes, and we will be mindful of that. If we think it's a likely change, then we would be trying to design to the likely change just so we don't have to change things late in the game.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Rickard, you'd have to unmute yourself.
Madam Chair, thank you for recognizing me. I'm Brad Rickard. I live at 55 Main Street. And my, I just, a question about the 28th. Is this, is the traffic report and a traffic study, are those the same thing? Or they, or is it, is it just a nomenclature thing, or are they two different things? Curious.
You have to unmute yourself, Vita.
Same thing. We have, I mean, we'll talk about it later, but we essentially looked at three intersections that will or would have been affected were this our residential development or not developed at all or a commercial development.
Oh, okay. Just to be clear, though, that report is coming to the zoning board on, on August, on July 28th. We will be discussing that in a meeting on August 4th. So questions about that report, and they will be reporting, presenting that report on August 4th. So that's a, we do not have a meeting that night. Oh, and should look for us on Zoom that night. Anything? Do I have any questions from the board tonight?
Just one question, Madam Chair, personally, if I may.
Yes.
And I didn't talk, I'm not sure what the answer is. Do we have people who are in litigation against this project?
No, I don't think we can have anyone in litigation against a project before it's actually been approved.
Okay.
That'd be the cart before the horse. Am I correct on that, Town Council?
I'm not aware of any litigation involving this site, the RFP, the Affordable Housing Project, anything to that extent. No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dan, Dan has her hand up. Yes.
If nobody else on that's sitting on the board has a question, no?
No.
Okay. Two things. Just, first one is, these are all rental units, correct? Okay. So I just want to confirm, in case anybody gets confused. In your application, under 8.4.2.2 activity mix type and intensity, it states that all the units are going to be for 60% area median income or less. That's not the case, right? That's not what you showed up on the slide.
I believe you're right. I think that may have been the typo. We are planning all units to be within 120, but the majority of them, the, the majority of the units will be under 60% AMI. We're just going to have those 11 units at or below 120%. So those work for us.
Thank you.
You cut a typo.
Thank you. Yes. And, and I did have a question about that, which is that how did you arrive at that, that scattering of numbers? how did you arrive at that that scattering of numbers? I mean, how did you decide which were which? And how many to put in each box?
Yeah, um, that's the fun part of our job. So um, a lot of it really stems from the ability to gather funds from uh from the state, be it local loan from housing tax credits, be it state subsidies, um, be it, you know, vouchers and other kinds of things. And so that program uh is really driven uh not because we like to just, you know, go like this, but we use a lot of the uh because of the programs that are funding the project. Each program has a certain requirement for what the unit mix um should be and the criteria of such. So it's not like, eh eh, yeah, that's kind of the the reasoning behind it.
And and part of that, I must say too, is, you know, we uh we didn't also do just rely on what the state would allow. You know, we also looked very closely at Wellfleet's housing production plan, uh took into account that and and really tried to push the broadest range of units uh of income, both because that's what is need needed. And then also that creates a really healthy community to have income diversity within the community.
Okay, thank you. And Catherine Myers has her hand up.
Hi, I'm Casey. I don't know why that says Catherine, um, but
I know you're a Casey, but I thought I'd give you former full title here.
Um, I just, I worked for the Province Town Independent, and I wondered if I could get um copies emailed to me of those those um rent, the the photographs, the renderings that I could use in the paper. Um, maybe
We'll be happy to make that happen.
Sure, yeah.
Great. And one of them that shows, I I think a single unit that's red and modern, is is that accurate of one of what the buildings will look like if if that were the one, was the one that we used?
That was the community building that I think you were thinking about. That's why it looks a little shorter and different from the others.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, so that's going to have kind of a property management um slash little uh community facility slash uh common uh laundry.
Okay, terrific.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else? They go back. Andy, yes, you have to be unmuted.
Can't understand me when I'm muted.
Nope, can't sit, can't lip read that well on Zoom.
So is how many of these units are going to be available to Wellfleet residents? How is it going to work? It's going to be like the the Eastham uh Green Village Green or whatever it's called.
So I could try to address um that question. So I think one of the things that's important to remember is that um eh, we have a fair housing law in the United States and uh, you know, that um providing access to housing for and providing it mobility so that people can move to where they want to live or where they have jobs or they have have family is is kind of important. The state, however, does have a process that allows us a lot, actually, formally, it allows the town to apply for in the initial lottery that is used to rent up the development for there to be a local preference of up to seventy percent of the units uh to go to either Wellfleet residents, or sometimes it's a little broader and kind of subregionally. Um, and uh therefore kind of increase the chances of local residents uh to be able to uh rank up on the lottery to to get those units. I would say, though, that in practice, and at the CDP, we have either been involved in or worked with towns in renting up a number of projects, that that the reality is it's usually uh between eighty and ninety percent of the residents end up being uh from the local community, and the project very much meets local needs. But I think we could probably all agree that we could use some more younger families on the outer Cape. And uh and having some of the units available to bring some uh younger folks to fill important jobs and get more kids in the elementary school would be a really good goal to me.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. So, Callan, I believe that what I actually need, since we have opened this meeting, is a motion to continue. Is that correct?
Do you do?
Yes.
Correct.
So, so, um.
Want me to make that motion to continue?
Yes, and then let me just say we are, we'll, um, yeah, you need to make a motion to continue to, having lost my schedule, to continue to July twenty-first.
I will make the motion that we continue the meeting to July twenty-first.
Okay, I need a second. Okay, um, I've got both Will and Trevor seconding all in favor. Will?
Hi.
Nick?
Hi.
Manny?
Hi.
Sharon, I, and Trevor.
Hi.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. Okay, we will um leave this for now with a reminder that next week at the same time at seven o'clock, and this time we will Chris, I'm pretty sure we have no other hearings that night, right? No, we do not. Okay, so that means we will start right at at seven o'clock next time, not not seven thirty. And we will be looking at architecture and landscaping. And I don't know whether it's going to be hybrid or or Zoom, but stay tuned to Town website for that information. I can't control the legislature. Okay, thank you all very much.
As always.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Sharon.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, Rebecca. We've actually started. You can stop tearing out your hair now.
Take a deep breath now. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Chris, Chris, I think the board may have minutes to the per, or do we not? It's been so long. When was our last meeting in June? Good lord knows. Um, our last, our last meeting was the twenty-third. Did we have a meeting on the twenty-third or did we?
No, we did not.
Okay, so our last meeting was the ninth. So I think we may have already, I don't know, do we have those minutes? I can get them out for next meeting. Okay. I haven't, I I thought I
I think they did go out, but
I think I'm up to date.
Nobody remembers them.
Nobody remembers them, so you probably need to send them again.
Yeah, let's let's take it up next meeting.
Yes, that sounds like a good plan. So, okay, um, and it will be just just architecture and landscaping and just this project, so. And I'd like to put out there, if anybody would want to come and help me get set up, I have no idea how it's going to work at the building and, but in previous for members who have been with us for a while, um, Justin always was there to help me set up the room, and I don't know what to expect. Um, so I I will need a little bit of help. Yeah.
I'd be glad to help.
Yeah.
Glad to help, Chris.
I'll get there probably um between, you know, around six forty, and that that'll give us twenty minutes to get set up. Yeah, and I'm hoping that we don't need to do this. I'm hoping as well. Uh, I am hoping that we we just, that somehow or that they do realize they have to get their act together.
Well, true you, Sharon. One of my customers is a big wig in the state of Massachusetts in the healthcare. And they're very, very concerned about the new variation of uh COVID.
Right.
So I don't see us going back to it right now. The alarm bells are ringing. That's all she said.
I have, I have my neighbor across the street and two family members with COVID right now. Yeah.
There's a new strain that's making them very nervous.
Yeah.
So I doubt that we'll be going to meetings.
I doubt that we'll be going to the CY, Adult Center. But if if we do, Chris, then we will be there to help you set up, and we will have Jan on Zoom. And we will have God knows who else on Zoom, and we will hope that we don't lose them all, but
We'll make it work somehow.
We'll make it work, and if it doesn't work, somebody can sue us. They always do anyway. What difference does it make?
Do a steady hand at the helm, it will be.
Absolutely.
Christine, are you, are you going to be sending us uh passcodes and meeting IDs via email this time?
Yeah, it's the same one every meeting we have. It's it's, it'll be posted on the town website as well. I'll I'll send out a copy of the agenda, but it's on the town website as well. Right, and you will also have another packet for us that we'll have to pick up because they're bringing you more schematics. Apparently so. Right. So send up a flare when those are ready. That was news to me. Yes, well. Yeah, I hope Rebecca um thinks to get them to me. Yeah. Yes. That'll work. Yeah, yeah, it'll be We'll make it work. We'll make it work. Okay, I need a motion to adjourn then.
So move.
Okay.
Everybody move that.
Everybody move that, so all in favor.
All right, everybody, thank you.
And we have no site visit next week unless you want to go look at Lawrence Road again.
I don't think
I don't think we've seen it enough. Yes, good. Good night, good night. Yeah, Chris, stay on a minute. We can turn off the recording. Okay. Uh huh.